Good morning, everyone. This is an exciting day, and I always call this Super Tuesday. So we are ready again for our council meeting on Super Tuesday. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're conducting today's work session via teleconference. This meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and will be available later on Channel 99 and AT&amp;T U-verse and the city's YouTube channel. And here again, just a reminder that the work sessions give the council an opportunity to review its items on today's agenda, as well as any ordinances and resolutions that have been routed for the council's consideration. This meeting is informal and no official actions are taken. At 11 o'clock, we will have an update from the EMA Director and the Fire Chief. Also, we'll look at our agenda for today. Looking at Item 9A, no action is required regarding the property located at 9 Marston Avenue in District 6 because the nuisance has already been abated by the owner. Item 9B is an ordinance that was presented last week for first reading, and it amended the fiscal year 2020 Action Plan and Community Development Budget and the Fiscal Year 2022 Journal Fund Budget. This transfer funds from the CBBG budget from 2015 through 2019, and this is adding $600,000 to the Street Improvement in the 2020 budget for a total of $1,100,000. Item 10 is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Harrison Avenue Architectural Review Board, and it appoints Scott, Craig Scott, to replace Stephanie Wagner and reappoints Bunny Yarnell. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation from the Edgewall County Commission, and this is for furniture valued at $2,145 used by the Fire Department. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Aldott B&amp;B Beverage Management and River Rock Landing. This is in regard to a concert and special event on October the 29th and permits use of the property adjacent to the campground. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Tyler Technologies for in-code public safety custom reporting tools to be used by the Police Department, and the amount is $4,500 per year, beginning in year two. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement between the city's Transportation Department, Edgewall County Department Services, and the EMA, and this relates to the use of the transportation equipment and the personnel in the event of a disaster. And Item 15 is a resolution authorizing a tax abatement agreement with calcine minerals and materials, and this is for a $7 million addition to the existing agronite mineral processing plant in the Commerce Center. It abates construction related to transaction taxes and noneducational property tax for a seven-year period. Are there any questions or comments from the council members concerning today's agenda? If there are no questions or... Did I hear someone? Hearing none, I'll move to the items that have been routed to the mayor and forward to the council. The first item is a resolution renaming Whitehall Street to Whitehead Street. Residents requested that the name be renamed in honor of Mrs. Maddie Whitehead, the oldest living original resident of Whitehall Street. And this is in District 3, Councilman Worthy. Do you have any comments on this?
Yes, it would be a great honor. She had a birthday here recently. So when her son contacted me and we got the process rolling, so hopefully we'll do this next week. Thank you.
Right. The next item is a resolution authorizing the use of the River Fest trademark for an event hosted by River Rock Landing on October the 29th, 2021. The city accepted the trademark from the Chamber in 2014. The only question, I have a question concerning this. Would this be one time? And maybe this is for the mayor, I mean, not the mayor, the attorney. Would this use of the River Fest trademark name, would this be for this one-time use for just this event here?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any, any other questions? Does the council have any further questions or comments? If not, and just to, and I'll announce it at the at the council meeting, we will be having a drawing after the council meeting today. We would do a presentation of that drawing on the next council meeting, which will be in-person, which will begin our in-person meetings because on October the 31st, the governor's is not proclamation, what is? The governor's proclamation was that it ends on the 31st of October. So that means our in-person meetings, I mean, our Zoom meetings will not be Zoom anymore. We will have to go back to in-person meetings unless she changes the proclamation before then or after then. But that ends the proclamation on the 31st. So we're on target. We're meeting in person next week, and that will be the beginning of our in-person meetings. Yes, Councilman Worthy?
If Lisa's on, I would like for, you know, I've been getting calls about the employees, some of them not getting a raise, the part-timers. Could she explain that if it's not putting on the spot? Because I talked to her this morning. I meant to ask her then, but since this is pre-council, that way everybody won't have to give her a call. If she could explain it, if it's not too much trouble.
I am on the call. I do not mind. Is it okay, Dr. Toles?
Yes, if it doesn't go into in-depth, that would have, have to do with a lot of personal because some of that could have been, some of it could have been offline. But go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. So Thomas did call me this morning and asked me about raises, and doubtless he has gotten a number of calls. I think the, I don't think it's a misunderstanding because I know for a fact that it was never said that all full-time, all non-full-time, part-time seasonal employees were getting a raise. What was said was that all non-full-time, part-time seasonal employees that made less than $9 an hour was getting a raise. And we do have some that make over $9 an hour, and those individuals did not get a raise. They're undoubtedly questioning a step raise. Well, the only way you can get a step increase is if you are a full-time employee and you are on the pay plan. And all full-time employees did indeed get a raise, did get a step increase, either a two-step or a four-step, depending on where you landed on the, on the pay plan as far as your wages. But there again, for non-full-time seasonal and part-time employees, only those that made less than $9 an hour received a raise. And most of those, and a large portion of those employees were making eight, eight and a quarter, or 850 in the parking racks in the Public Works Department. And there again, all of those were put to $9. He asked me about the starting pay thing, and that had to do with the, with the pay plan. We altered the pay plan to get the, get the starting pay for full-time employees up to 10, I think it was 10:04 an hour. And there again, that has nothing to do with non-full-time seasonal or part-time employees because they are not on the pay plan.
Ms. Ross, can, can those, can those employees, you know, it would, it would be not some, I think sometime they don't understand. Would it be all right for them to call your office and ask you to explain that to them so that they would understand? Do you have a problem with that? I'm just asking.
No, ma'am, I do not, you know. So I'm not always in my office. As a matter of fact, a lot of the times I'm not in my office. But, you know, they can leave a message, and I do try to return my messages. But no, I do not have a problem with that. The, the correct procedure is actually for them to go to their direct supervisor, department head, supervisor, director of the department is who they should go to first. And those people, individuals should be able to explain it to them.
You know, I, I know this is not usual for the city, but you know, sometimes, and I know that they do have group meetings, you know, but, but sometimes things can be explained to, you know, when, when they periodically, when there are meetings to explain different things, different benefits. You know, it would be nice for the head of that department to call you in and have, and have a conversation with them concerning, concerning that. And that way, they will be getting it from you, straight from you, and not necessarily from the supervisor who's understanding it just like they are.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, but that's not, that's not my call. So that was just a comment and a suggestion. But you know, that, that would be a good way to alleviate a lot of calls and misunderstandings when you are able to talk to them as a group and you and the person that's administering this is able to talk to them and tell them 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Am I correct, Councilman Worthy?
Well, what a confusion came in is when they said all employees, you know, that would get the raise. So when you say all, if that was correctly stated in the meeting, in the council meeting, then they, they assumed the part-timers too. But she did a great job explaining it. So that should, everybody should understand that. So thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
Madam President, I have one.
Yes.
Will the, in the regular meeting at 11, will the tax abatement agreement be explained in, in depth?
No, no, sir.
Okay, all right.
I mean, no. Mr. Hooks will be on.
Right.
So, and we'll, we'll call on him to, to, to talk. But, and we'll see how that, how that goes.
Okay, I was just going through the numbers and reading the, reading the agreement. And I mean, it, it looks fine. I just, you know, just for clarity, just to let everybody know what we're doing. And I mean, I think it's a great day for that company, 20 new jobs and, yes, good to see growth in Gaston. So just wanted to see if there was anything mentioned about it.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
All right. If there's, if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn until 11 o'clock when we start our council meeting. Okay, good morning again. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're meeting today by teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and can also be viewed later on Comcast, Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the city of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to all the chair calls on City Clerk, Ivana Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Councilwoman Back?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilwoman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Back to lead the invocation.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads and go to the prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the ability and the pleasure of living in Gaston, Alabama. And Father, we pray that you will be with us as we make decisions that have an impact on our city and our citizens and our county. God, we just ask for wisdom and clarity. We ask for you to be with us as we go through these days. Be with those that have lost loved ones, those that are sick, and those that are needing you for comfort and for care. We just ask you now to be with our families, keep us safe. Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. At this time, we'll have an update from Ms. Deborah Gaither from the Emergency Management Agency.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
As you can tell, I'm not Ms. Gaither.
Oh, how are you today, this morning?
I'm good, ma'am. How are you? All right, so I'm going to give you the, the numbers of where we stand with COVID. We added an additional 64 cases during the last seven days. That's roughly a 43, 44% from our last number of cases, a 44% decrease. Our positivity rate in the county now stands at 11.2%, which again is trending in a favorable direction for us all. Sadly, we've had to add an additional two deaths attributed to COVID. So that makes our cumulative total of deaths in the county at 496. Our average cases per day over the last seven-day period stands at 9.29. So that's come down some as well from last week's numbers. We've got approximately 36% of the county has been fully vaccinated, and almost 40% has received one dose, at least one dose of the vaccine. So all of those numbers are trending in directions that are favorable. We still ask that, you know, folks still use the precautions that we've used the entire time. Obviously, they are, they're working. Folks are starting to, to take a little bit more attention and care into taking the actions that they need to take to make sure that themselves, their families, and others are safe. Last thing to mention, as you know, Vaccinate Gaston ended last week. I cannot say enough positives about how well this program was ran, how it was developed, and how the people responded to it. The numbers that, that we saw throughout, you know, they were a little bit slow getting started because I think folks with anything new, you know, there's a little bit of apprehension to it. But, you know, middle of the road of the Vaccinate Program, you know, we were, we were putting up some really big numbers with our pharmacy partners. So the final totals, tabulations aren't in yet because we still have a few pharmacies to check with. But as of about 10 minutes ago, we stood at 2,006 individuals received their vaccination through the Vaccinate Gaston program. And again, I attribute the, the increase in the number of folks that are vaccinated rising as well percentage-wise. I credit Vaccinate Gaston with a large part of that because folks had more than, more than just their circle of influence that were telling them how important it was to, to get the vaccine and at the same time, you know, get a little bit of cash to, to go along with it. So with that, I will be glad to answer any questions that you might have or anything that I can take to Ms. Gaither to get answered.
Madam President, I have a quick question, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Gosh, when you say 60, or excuse me, 36% of Edgewall County are fully vaccinated, is that every man, woman, and child or every eligible of age?
Yes, it's, it's of age. And the way they break the statistics down, they count everybody over the age of 18. I was looking at the statistics this morning, and I didn't actually write the statistic down. But the, the group that has really, the age group that has really come along strong throughout the last probably month, month and a half, has been the very group that we've struggled with all along, you know, that 19 to 44 age group in getting their vaccinations. You know, their, their numbers, believe it or not, are like 44% of them have been vaccinated now, which that number was extremely, extremely low when, when all of this first started. So, but yes, the, the simple answer is it includes everybody over the age of 18.
Any other questions to Mr. Josh? We have, really appreciate you. You've come this time with some good news, and we're happy about that. And we just still continue for those who have not been vaccinated to get vaccinated because people are still dying. And so we just need to make sure that we all are protected in one way or the other. But thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll hear from Chief Reed.
Good morning, Madam President, Councilman. I have nothing but good news from the COVID front this morning. We have only had four persons under investigation ran last week. Our call volume's still up because we've had a rash of house fires. We've had seven house fires in the past eight days. But as far as PUIs go, we've only had four. That's an 86.7% drop from August. So that's huge to me. As far as anything else, we don't have anything on the COVID front report. We're still doing everything we have been doing. I do ask y'all on a personal note to pray for one of my commanders. I have a commander out with complications from open-heart surgery, and he's not having a good go of it. So if y'all could remember him and y'all's prayers, I appreciate it. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions to Chief Reed?
Thank you all for your time.
Okay, we want to thank you all so for a good report, and we appreciate everything that you all are doing for the city of Gaston.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, we'll continue with our agenda. The first item is the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on October the 12th.
So moved.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Second.
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Back?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of October the 8th through the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Okay. Are there any proclamations? We'll move, there's unfinished business. Item 9A, no council action is necessary regarding the resolution on 5 Marston Avenue in District 6. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. Item B is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020 Action Plan and the Budget for the HUD Community Development Block Grant and amending the fiscal year 2022 Journal Fund Budget to reallocate prior year's CDBG funds to 2020 CDBG Street Improvement. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It transfers the CDBG budget 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019, adding $600,000 to the 2020 Street Improvements, making the total $1.1 million. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I'm heard. Second.
Are they in a discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
The next item, Item 10, is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Harrison Avenue Architectural Review Board. This appoints Craig Scott to replace Stephanie Wagner and reappoints Barney Yarnell for terms ending September the 15th, 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. And, and given the opportunity, Madam President, I'd like to make some comments about this.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Councilman Wilson at this time.
I just want to clarify a few things. I did receive a couple of inquiries and objections to this appointment based on the fact of, the question of homeownership as a qualifier to serve on some of these architectural review boards. And I just want to clarify that, that you do not have to be a homeowner in, on Harrison Avenue to be a member of the Architectural Review Board. You do have to be a resident of the Harrison Historic Area, but you do not actually have to be a homeowner. So for that reason, I'm not going to raise any objection to this appointment. On all other merits, Mr. Scott is qualified for this seat. He's actually served on this Architectural Review Board in the past. And again, I just want to clarify, I did get a couple of comments from citizens saying that, that homeownership was an issue, and I, I just wanted to make sure that's clear, both for the Tarrantine Historic Architectural Review Board and the Harrison, and I believe the Argyle Circle Architectural Review Board as well. Homeownership is not part of the prerequisite to serve on the board. You do have to be a resident, though, which Mr. Scott is.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, Item 11, is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a donation from the Edgewall County Commission, and this is for furniture valued at $2,145 to be used by the Fire Department. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution, Item 12, is authorize an agreement with Aldott B&amp;B Beverage Management and River Rock Landing. And this is regarding the use of the Jack L. Ray Family Park and Aldott property in regards to a concert and special event at the campgrounds on October the 29th. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President, I'm going to... Madam President, I'm going to abstain from this vote because I am actually involved in the planning of this event. So I, I'll withhold the vote here.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
I'm staying.
I'm staying. Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt with one extension.
Item thirteen is another resolution authorizing agreement with the Tyler Technologies for in-code public safety custom reporting tool, and the amount is four thousand and five hundred dollars per year beginning in year two. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, which is item fourteen, is authorizing the intergovernmental agreement between the city's transportation department, Edgewall County Department Services, and the EMA. And this relates to the use of transportation equipment and personnel in the event of a disaster. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes. Our next.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next and last resolution is authorizing a tax, tax abatement agreement with Cal, Calkeen Minerals and Materials. And this is for a major addition to the existing agronaut mineral processing plant located in the Commerce Center and abate, uh, construction-related transaction taxes and noneducational property taxes for a seven-year period. And this project involves a capital investment of seven million dollars. And before I, uh, before, before I call on the vote, uh, I will call on, uh, Mr. Hooks.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a project we've worked on called Project Pellet. It's one we're very proud of. It was brought to Gaston as a new company in two thousand eighteen. And they're now in an expansion mode. Seven million dollars in capital investment, mostly for equipment. They'll be, uh, hiring forty additional people over the next two years. They're in a, in a project that's in an extremely high-growth mode and high-growth market, extremely competitive. They have, um, uh, over the, that last seven years, just to run through with you what typically we go through in our deal, that seven-year abatement. It's noneducational taxes. So that will produce over the next seven years, a hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents for the city school system. It produces, uh, sixty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars for the county school system. And it will produce twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars per year. Excuse me, uh, over the seven-year period for the state school system for a total of roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars over that seven-year period in school taxes that will be produced by this project. And then from the city's perspective, it produces roughly two hundred thousand dollars per year over a seven-year period, uh, for this, for the, um, for the city. So to a tune of roughly four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in revenue produced over the next seven years in city taxes and city revenue. Uh, I'll be happy to answer anything, uh, any questions. Some as you all, as you are well aware, typically we work all of these projects under code name. Again, this is one Project Pellet. But as, as it moves and you as the council vote, it comes down and the company is actually Calcion, which again is located at one forty Thomas Drive in the Gaston Industrial Park off of Highway seventy-seven. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I possibly can. As again, you know, we are under confidentiality agreements and non-disclosure agreements with the company. So, uh, but in terms of relationships with the city, I'll be happy to answer any questions I possibly could.
Councilman, will you?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Mr. Hooks, there, there are some who may be under the belief. I mean, we've done a number of these agreements over the years and there's some who may be under the belief that, uh, the tax abatements are a, uh, are a straight giveaway, uh, from the city budget. But in fact, um, uh, would it be safe to say that one, there's no upfront money, uh, from the city's budget? Which is a plus and that the, the clawback scenarios within this disagreement actually result, uh, in these types of, uh, projects essentially paying for themselves to some degree.
Councilman Williams, that's an accurate assessment. I'd go a little bit farther to say that if they don't invest the capital, then they don't get the abate, as you referred to. It's, it's not an upfront deal. I'll also go another step farther and say to you that in, in industrial recruitment across the south and the, in the nation today, tax abatements are not even considered as incentives. They're considered, there is a differential between abatements and incentives. So when people talk about us giving incentives to companies to come to Gaston, when we're talking about just abatements, in the big scheme and the big picture of industrial recruitment, those are considered as two different, uh, two different things.
Okay. Are there any other questions to? Councilman Back?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, David, could you, you know, I recently have been made aware of Calcion. They're a relatively new company in Gaston. Uh, where did they, where'd they come from? Did they have another location or is this their only, only spot?
So, uh, Councilman Back, some of this I'm going to have to be careful with, uh, again, from non-disclosure standpoint. Calcion is actually, their corporate headquarters is in Gaston. They have subsidiary companies that they work, but Calcion themselves, they're in a, in a field that is extremely competitive, uh, is extremely aggressive. It is extremely, uh, uh, on the, on the far end of techno, on the front end of technology and expansion and innovation. They basically produce a product, uh, that takes the place of plastics. And as you all know, uh, the federal government has cracked down on plastic straws around the country. Uh, and it's produced a extreme demand for, uh, their product.
Oh, thanks. Well, that's, uh, they sound like a very innovative company and glad they chose Gaston.
They are. And, and again, kudos to this city administration and Bill Green for the work they did on securing them in two thousand eighteen. Again, I think this is a, a direction forward, uh, with an expansion of the products they do. Now, they make a lot of other products using this technique. But straws are the ones that's, that are hot now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. After this, uh, do I have a, a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Um, not to sound like a broken record, but I'm going to need to abstain from this as well. I actually do business with Calcion. In addition to straws, they also do a lot of recyclable and biodegradable to-go food packaging items and utensils that are recyclable. Um, and we use those at several of our restaurant locations. So I don't, I don't want to, uh, have any appearance of impropriety here. So I'm going to.
And just for clarification, uh, in my due diligence process, I actually missed, missed that Councilman Wilson. My, my apologies to you. I would have.
It's a relatively new, relatively new relationship, but we are deploying new products in several different restaurants.
But I think you can also attest to the success and growth of the company.
Well, it's, it really is unbelievable. And I know this isn't the time for these comments, but what these folks are doing to disrupt the consumable products industry in the restaurant world. One of the major problems that's happening in America right now is the inability to import things like Styrofoam to-go plates and plastic forks and knives and spoons. And these guys are stepping in and using a one hundred percent recyclable material to create spoons and forks and knives and straws and to-go containers that replace plastic. So not only are they incredibly environmentally conscious, they're also, uh, located right here in Gaston. So.
And, and our challenge, and our challenge is going to be to continue to help them grow.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah. All right. Guys, the, the, are, are, are biodegradable and edible interchangeable terms? That, that's a joke.
Depends on how hungry you are, I guess, Councilman Worthy.
Ms. Nelson, if you'll continue.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt with one extension.
All right. This ends our, uh, resolutions, uh, at this time.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right. And thank you. Great opportunity for Gaston. Uh, at this time, we'll have department, if, are there any department reports?
Uh, Dr. Toles?
Yes.
I actually have something I need to say, please.
All right.
Um, I, we just wanted to give an account, uh, for the Gaston incentive program. I think Josh, while ago, mentioned a little over two thousand in a, that it's not the actual number that qualified. We gave away, uh, um, a hundred dollars to one thousand six hundred and fifty-six, uh, citizens of Gaston. There were other people that did come, uh, but did not qualify for a number of reasons. They were not citizens of Gaston. Uh, we had a lot of that. Uh, they were, um, you know, got the vaccination before the program started. So just a number of reasons. But one thousand six hundred and fifty-six individuals, citizens of Gaston, has qualified for this drawing today. So we will be doing six drawings, uh, of five thousand dollars apiece here in just a few minutes, which we're very excited about. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other department reports? Okay. If not, we'll have, uh, uh, comments by the, uh, council members if there's any comments. Starting with, uh, Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just, just a quick, quick point. Do, uh, do you want to commend those who, uh, who presented the idea of, uh, of the vaccination incentive? Do you want to commend the mayor's office for, for standing behind and pushing that idea? Want to commend this council for being supportive of it. And, uh, and I do, uh, want to thank the city as a whole for generating, uh, what is, uh, considered to be a very positive result. It, it is unfortunate that it took, uh, us presenting a financial, uh, motive to get people to do what, what, what could help to move us in the right direction and help us to trend in the right direction. But, um, we got the desire. So, uh, or at least we got close. So, uh, so again, I do appreciate everyone's support and effort in that regard. Congratulations, uh, in advance to, uh, to those, uh, who will be lucky enough to, uh, to have their name drawn. And likewise, uh, I do want to, do want to ask the, uh, the council to, uh, do want to ask the council to continue. And Lisa, uh, this is for you as well. Do you want us to continue the discussions? I'll be calling a finance committee meeting to discuss a number of things. But I do want us to continue to discuss ways that we can help our police and fire department, uh, with their recruiting of. You know, it's not a, it's not an easy fix, uh, because there's so many things that are motivating people to, to make, uh, professional moves nowadays, both in, both within and out of their specific industry. But, uh, but again, let's, uh, let's keep the discussion going so that we can continue to launch creative things to, to make sure that we're retaining our talent. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Worthy?
I don't have anything.
Councilman, uh, Back?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, uh, uh, thank Chief Jaggers, Sheriff Jonathan Horton, and Assistant District Attorney Bryn Crane for coming out to the District Four Community Meeting, uh, last Thursday night. There was a incident of, at the Coin Lawmill on Rainbow Drive. I think many of you have probably seen that. And I just appreciate, uh, law enforcement, uh, stepping forward and, uh, kind of quelling the rumors of what was being said. And, and it's, uh, it's just nice to have them, uh, willing to participate. So I want to thank them. Uh, and I also want to bring up, uh, I'm sure everyone is aware, is aware that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And, uh, many cities around our nation have, uh, pink industrial garbage cans, ninety-six gallon garbage cans. And so I've been looking into that and talked with, uh, 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 Council President Toles and, and, uh, others. And so we are hopefully going to be doing that, uh, very soon. I've also spoke with, uh, Tara Poulford at Never Surrender, which is our local Edgewall County Breast Cancer Organization. And, uh, these pink garbage cans simply serve as a reminder, uh, for, uh, ladies to get their annual mammograms and just for cancer awareness. They, they, they do look nice out in the, on the street, obviously, but, uh, it also serves a much deeper purpose. I imagine, uh, many, many families have been affected by breast cancer. And so this is a way that, uh, the city can help in promoting that. You would, uh, the details have not all been worked out yet, but, uh, we, we're, we're, we're getting there. Essentially, most cities, uh, the citizens keep their, uh, city-issued garbage cans. They purchase these cans themselves. So the citizens actually own the pink garbage cans. And they're responsible for them. And, uh, and they work just like regular garbage cans. Our trucks able to pick them up and dump them in our garbage trucks. And, uh, it's just a way to promote, uh, breast cancer awareness. So just, uh, look forward to that getting started in our community. And, uh, think it'll, it'll go a long way in helping the Never Surrender Group, uh, bring, uh, awareness about breast cancer to our, to our city. So thank you very much.
Councilman, uh, Back? I mean, Councilman, uh, Wilson?
Yes, Madam President. Just a, a couple of things. Back to the Harrelson Architectural Review Board, I want to clarify. Um, I, I think I made it clear why I didn't object to Mr. Scott's appointment. Again, I think he's very qualified and he's served on that board before. Um, but I do want to say to the individuals that reached out to me with concerns about the overall structure, I felt like Mr. Scott maybe got caught up in the middle of something that didn't really have a lot to do with him personally. Um, there is some disagreements, I think, in the Architectural Review Board concerning some matters there. One of the individuals that reached out to me, I encouraged them to volunteer to participate on that board. And they did submit an application and that application was forwarded, uh, to the mayor's office this week. So I just want to make it clear that there's always an opportunity to serve on that board. And I also want to make it clear that, um, this advisory board does not have its own free will or discretion. This board is implementing the laws of the state of Alabama as they pertain to historic structures. So they don't have leeway, personal leeway to make decisions. They are, they're there to interpret the law as it's written and, and to deliver that in certain instances. So I would encourage individuals that maybe have an issue with the way those, the organizational structure of those, uh, architectural review boards are, are set up. I would say your focus should, should be on changing the way those architectural review boards are set up, not necessarily objecting to the individuals who volunteered to. who volunteer to serve on those boards. If there's an issue that you feel like maybe isn't handled correctly, it would require us to change the city ordinance, not simply change the individuals who are on the board. Those individuals do not have free will to make their own decisions about how some of these architectural issues are handled. And the other thing I'll say is, just in general on River Fest, this is something that folks in this community talk all the time about needing to focus on our river and do something fun. So I got together with a few other local business owners, and we're going to try and throw a concert. That's all it is. It should be a great time. I hope everybody has an opportunity to come out and check it out. The last thing I'll say about Calcion is, first of all, Jamie Hollingsworth, who's a local citizen who was instrumental in recruiting Calcion Minerals to Gadsden, kind of a chance meeting. It's funny how things happen. He had met an individual and had a piece of commercial property here that he was looking to backfill and ended up meeting these guys and got them in touch with everybody involved. And they were able to relocate their headquarters here. And again, when we talk about sustainable businesses in this community, these guys are disrupting a multi-billion-dollar industry, and their practices are environmentally sound. They're eliminating plastic from our oceans and our waterways, and they're doing it in a sustainable way. And it's really creative, and it's really innovative. And given the current nature of importing and exporting of goods right now, especially plastic goods, to be able to have an opportunity to jump out there and take advantage of this market with a new injection molding line, it's super exciting. And these are the types of businesses I do think we should try to spend more time on recruiting and supporting and fostering their growth. So kudos to Tony Myers, the CEO of Calcion, for what they did. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Cannon.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Reed.
No, ma'am, not a thing.
Mayor? Do you have any comment?
I do. Proud about the Calcion thing. When we first heard about that, it sounded like strange and out of space. Of course, I wasn't on that part of it. But they've done an excellent job. Mr. Hooks and the folks with Calcion, I think that's going to turn out to be something really big for us. Sure do.
All right. If there's nothing else, I do like for us to, as Chief Reed said, to remember the fire marshal that is sick. And also let us remember Colin Powell, who passed away. He was instrumental and a legend in our country. So we remember him. Also, council members, we will be meeting in person next week. And as I had said in pre-council, the governor's proclamation ends October the 31st. So therefore, we would be going back to in-person meetings. And that is unless she changes the proclamation before then. So just wanted to let you all know at this time. If there's nothing else, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All right. And don't forget the drawing that's going to take place. I would say in the next 15 minutes in the council chambers. The meeting is adjourned.
Hey, good morning. We'd like to welcome you to the drawings of Vaccinate Gadsden. Today, we have drawings, or six drawings of $5,000 each. This is a part of the Vaccinate Gadsden, where we had a total of 1,656 residents of Gadsden that qualified for this program. There were many that might have come in that lived right outside the city limits, and we apologize for not being able to accept those. But the program was designed for those residents that live inside the city limits of Gads. Today, we have Ruth Moffett from the United Way and Mary Gomidian with the Etowah County Health Department. They're each going to draw one each, and then we'll report the six winning numbers. Each winning ticket will have a check made out for them, and we will have photo ops for next Tuesday, where they will receive a $5,000 check, okay, at our live council meeting. All right, with nothing further to do, Ruth or Mary, whichever one wants to start.
She's nervous. We just move our hand around. The one that's. And we are very excited to announce that our first winner is Timothy Thacker. Or it looks the, maybe Timothy the Thacker. We move and read it. It's definitely Timothy.
Yep. There's a Chris.
Winner number two is. We're going to say Donald Hult, H-U-L-T. I'm hoping. Winner number three is Isaiah Lot, L-O-T-T. Winner number four is Donna Dingeman. Donna Dingeman.
I can see. Yeah. I can see. Yeah.
Winner number five is Noah Elijah Spears. Noah. And the final draw is, we'll spell it, E-U-L-A-L-I-A, Gasparr. We'd like at this time to take the opportunity to thank our pharmacies. Without them, this would probably not have been a success. So we'd like to thank the pharmacies that did participate in our program. The Etowah County Health Department was very instrumental in helping us, as well as other agencies. We think the program was a great success, and we're very grateful that we were, had the ability to be able to do this. And there's going to be six lucky people who are going to be very excited here in just a few minutes. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.